Evening, everyone. I'm Mayor Catherine Foley. Thank you for coming to this evening's workshop of the Cold Spring Village Board of Trustees. There are a number of folks in the room and online who have not come to meetings before, so I'm going to ask the board to introduce themselves.
I'm trustee Aaron Frymark.
I'm trustee Laura Bozzi. Who started coming?
Debbie Mary Woods.
And trustee Starbuck is traveling, so she's not with us this week, but she will surely view the recording later. We have a few small items of board business this evening, and then we'll go into the primary portion of the agenda. First announcements, yard waste pickup is next week. Put it out Wednesday night for pickup on Thursday with paper bags or bins that can be emptied. You've probably noticed when it came down Main Street that the more specific signs for the days that Main Street parking meters are in effect have been put up as promised. That should help clarify. And I just want to say thank you to the redways and facilities crew who put them up very quickly earlier today. It should help the public a lot. And then lastly, there is a shoreline cleanup at Dockside on Saturday. It's a part of the Riverkeeper Suite all up and down the Hudson River. I think that it is nine to 12. Can anyone confirm nine to 12 at Dockside? Next item is opportunity to add or modify agenda items. Any requests? Okay. Well, I'm going to come down to the first part. So Mayor Emeritus Miranda is here. We had the vision to identify Larry Burke. I'm going to get emotional. I'm trying not to identify Larry Burke as a leader and a good man who could transform our police department into the true gold standard of community policing in a small place. And he served for seven years. He is tired. His hard work. Larry is not leaving us. You're going to see him on patrol, but he is stepping down as officer in charge. And I would like to make a motion to designate Officer Matt Jackson as our officer in charge. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Matt was our officer of the year last year, so we're still happy to have him stepping up. There's no sound, just so the village knows, there's no sound coming through.
See, this happens for us too, and better than that by.
Any other night it runs perfectly smoothly.
Wait, yes, you can hear?
Yeah, okay.
Cool.
Great. As I was saying, any other night it runs perfectly smoothly. What you missed, thank you very much whoever called that out. What you missed was the designation of Matt Jackson as the officer in charge and the passing of a resolution to renew our workers' compensation policy. So now we're getting to the meat of our meeting. When the Fjord Trail team announced it would hold two information sessions this spring, one related to the alternative roots analysis and one to the shoreline trail concept design, we as a village board thought it would be helpful to hear feedback from the village residents and business owners who attended and/or watched these sessions. We trustees either attended or we watched the recordings. I want to make we need to all be very clear that this meeting is not a referendum on the Fjord Trail as a project. We're speaking, we're specifically seeking input on information that was presented to the public in those sessions. Additionally, we need to be clear that there is no permit or other approval process before the village board or our standing boards, which are planning, zoning, and historic district review board. The Fjord Trail is a project being proposed by a private entity on state parkland, including some within the boundaries of our village. For the environmental review of the project, New York State Parks is the lead agency. The village's only role in this project is advocacy toward outcomes and impact mitigation in the village. The village board is looking to hear from villagers now while the HHFT presentations are fresh in people's minds and as we prepare as a community to receive the critically important draft general environmental impact statement for the overall project. Tonight, we'll further inform the trustees of areas of concern and areas of support. However, the most important time for community members to engage and comment is after the DGEIS is released, that draft environmental impact statement. The estimated date for that is sometime in June. That's what we know for the moment. The village board will comment on the DGEIS, as can our standing boards. The public, individuals, can also comment on the content of the DGEIS. That's where your comments will have the greatest and most direct impact on project outcomes. We encourage you to read that document thoroughly and submit your thoughtful feedback by the given deadline. As I said, the village board doesn't have an approval role in this project, and I want to be clear that the village board as a body has not taken an official position on the project to date. I have provided my own position statement in conjunction with the mayor of Nelsonville and the Phillips Town supervisor. However, the village board, like the village we represent, isn't simply for or against the trail. We as trustees have different opinions along the entire spectrum, just like the people we represent. Regardless of where we are on that spectrum, we are all listening. And most importantly, we're listening to the villagers to whom we're accountable. The Fjord Trail project has been, is, and will be, a challenge for us as a community. Loud and polarizing statements frequently drown moderate voices and subtle thinking. Voices with nuanced positions are easily lost in the din. Polarization doesn't solve problems. Listening, connection, and compromise do. So tonight, we ask you, everyone in the room and everyone online who's going to speak, we ask you to speak moderately, even if your views are strong. We do have some of our own rules for public comment in village meetings. You may speak on items that are on the agenda only. If you veer off course, I'll give you a gentle reminder. Please provide new comments that carry the discourse forward. Avoid repeating, reiterating, and amplifying points already made. We want to make sure that everyone who wants to speak has a chance. We will be recognizing Village of Cold Street Spring residents and business owners first, starting with those in the room who've signed up to speak. If you haven't signed up to speak, the blank sheet's right there. And then moving to those who are online. After we've heard from all villagers, the board will recognize speakers from Nelsonville and Phillips Town for a period of time determined by the trustees. For your help with this, we are going to ask for your name and address. I think we know most everybody. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. If you can't say what you hope to say in that time, you may submit comments in writing to vcsclerk@coldspringny.gov. I want to confirm that if you have sent letters, the board has received many written comments in advance of the meeting. We're still making our way through them. They'll be entered into the public record and will be available online with the minutes of this session. Comments must be addressed to the board as a body, not to an individual trustee and not to the public audience. The village board is not required to respond to questions or comments from the public, but may do so at the chair's discretion. Again, we want to use the time to be hearing as many people as possible rather than a back and forth. Most importantly, we ask everyone to observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Any statements made during a public meeting by the trustees or members of the public shall not involve hate speech or obscenities or directly or indirectly threatening speech. Yelling and cursing will not be permitted. This meeting and all of our meetings is recorded, so there will be a full record of any statements made. Please conduct yourselves accordingly. Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to open public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, the sign and see if you get elected. Sorry, let's just look at the letter. Three minutes. And if you could bring up the sign and see if they're on the table.
Hope everyone signed who want to speak.
Yeah. Okay. And I move the letter back. Thank you very much.
I have a couple people. I just speak at the end of, I don't have
Tell me your name.
John Erickson, where do you live?
Okay, gotcha. Okay. So the first on the list is Irene Piazza of Six, Paulding Ave. Come on up. Hi.
Hi.
Got better glasses every time she comes. All right. Yeah.
Okay.
Three minutes.
Hello, and thank you, village board. I want to acknowledge you are both elected public servants and active community members and my neighbors. My intention tonight is to contribute to an intelligent, respectful, problem-solving discourse. On December 15th, 2023, the Highland Current published an article, "Can Everyone Shop Main Street?" The article focused on the advocacy of Lisa Teraconne, a fish kill resident and executive director of Deconic Resources for Independence. Small business owner and trustee Eliza Starbuck, small business owner of Flower Cup Wine, Eliza Starbuck, who's not here, and so I don't want to be picking on her because she's not here. Fully participated in this article and appeared to be in collaboration with Ms. Teraconne to highlight Cold Spring's lack of ADA compliance and the very real legal and ethical obligations to comply with these federal ADA laws. The article reported that Starbuck, Ms. Starbuck acknowledged that there is work to do. "We are a teeny tiny village with a budget that is tiny, and we don't have the funds to make the entire village ADA compliant," said Starbuck, adding that she believes many business owners fail to comply only because it's not on their radar. "With any issue where it's serving a smaller population in the community, it becomes a low priority, which is absolutely unfair."
Irene, yes. Are you making comments related to the
Yes, I'm getting to that. Yes. Okay. So my point is, is when I saw the review, when I went to the information sessions, there was a lot about ADA access to accessing New York's state parks, which include a trail, which is not a sidewalk. A sidewalk, you can't ride a bike on, but a trail, you can ride a bike, walk, and have multiple use for. And my concern is with the data committee and the information that I read, anyway. I didn't see anything about being forward towards being ADA compliant or helping New York states comply with the mission to make it completely accessible to all people. And I'm not sure if there's any, if the board itself here or anybody besides the Hudson, beside the Fjord Trail people, they make that statement a lot. They have it on their program a lot, but in terms of the town boards and the meetings here, I don't know if there's any been concrete actions to include an ADA advocate on like the data committee or part of these discussions as opposed to just speaking in general about access. So that's basically what this is about. My, thank you.
Great. Thanks a lot. Maliki Labree Cleary, 20 Mountain Avenue. Hi.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Foley and the village board for the opportunity to speak. My name is Maliki Labree Cleary, 20 Mountain Avenue, Cold Spring. I would like to say that I am a huge supporter of the Fjord Trail and its current vision, as is envisioned by the master plan, which is the vision of the Fjord Trail beginning at Dockside Park. And I'll explain why I am a supporter of that vision. To contextualize my point of view, I live in Cold Spring. I'm a lifelong village resident, but I work in Newburgh. I've worked in Newburgh for the last six years, and my commute tracks very closely to the proposed route of the Fjord Trail. And I would like to offer some perspective in that Cold Spring is not the only municipality that will benefit from the economic opportunities and the quality of life opportunities that the Fjord Trail will provide, but also cities like Newburgh that are historically distressed and could really benefit from those things. The Fjord Trail is not existing by itself. It's going to connect to a network of trails that are both exist and are proposed for the future, including the Connector Trail, which is proposed to link Beacon train station to the Newburgh Beacon Bridge. If these things came into existence, I would be able to get to my place of work in half the time without having to worry about getting hit by a tractor trailer, and that just sounds incredibly awesome. On other, another point is that it was made, Mayor Foley took the position that the Fjord Trail should begin at Little Stony Point. I do not think that is a good idea. I have no doubt that Mayor Foley has the best interests of the village in mind, though I fear that maybe louder misguided voices have prevailed upon her. And the reason I say that is if the Fjord Trail begins at Little Stony Point, all that's going to happen is people are still going to come to Cold Spring, and they're going to walk or bike along Route 90 or along Fair Street and just aggravate the issue. I think that a compromise is on the table and should be considered that does not involve just ruling out Dockside altogether, and some of those compromises were talked about in the last session with the alternative routes. I myself would really like if the village board and Mayor Foley considered something like Route 6, which follows the west side of the tracks directly from the train station all the way north for 7.5 miles. And that, in that way, when a person arrives at the train station, they're immediately leaving Cold Spring, not arriving to
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just, I'm saying this in humor, but you know me well enough. I'm not scared. Better voices don't scare me.
Okay.
Daniel Blumberg. Hi, 16 Pastory. Sorry, I recognize you.
Hi. Hi, I'm Dan Blumberg. I live on Parrot Street. I've lived in Cold Spring for eight years. I've been excited about the Fjord Trail for all of those years, ever since I first saw the sign as I was getting off of Metro North. I have three young boys. I would really love for the trail to be built before the youngest, who is seven, graduates high school. I'm getting less and less optimistic about that. I echo a lot of, where'd you go? What he just said, like, to the letter. I think that the half measure that's been proposed of starting it at Little Stony Point, like was just said, does not address the issues. It's just, it just makes it worse, frankly. People will be crowding 90 and crowding Fair Street. And I likewise want to be able to bike and walk safely from Cold Spring to Beacon, across to Newburgh, et cetera, with my kids. I know this stretch of river really well. I guide kayak trips on the stretch between Breakneck and Vanerman Island. I know it really well. Gorgeous, we all agree on that. And I would love to take my kids and visitors. Visitors are going to come whether we build this trail, no matter where we start the trail, visitors are coming, they're coming in big numbers. And so I would encourage the board to get behind the plan that does the most for Cold Spring, and that's the plan that starts at Dockside Park. Thank you.
Oh, Peter Farrell, 191 Main.
Hi. Good evening. Thanks, everyone. Peter Farrell, 191 Main Street. I agree with all the comments that we just made, so I don't need to repeat those comments, but I do think we got to focus on, again, the accessibility and the safe accessibility, especially for seniors, people in wheelchairs, walkers, strollers. You know, we can't do that, I think, over that Fair Street or 90, so I think Dockside is the best option. Thanks.
Gretchen Dykstra. Okay, I got
My name's Gretchen Dykstra. Thank you for holding this. I didn't prepare anything. There are many reasons to be worried about the Fjord Trail, and I'm particularly concerned about the nature of the public-private partnership. And with that, I'd like to say that I've had extensive experience with public-private partnerships, both legally and operationally. And one of the things that disturbs me profoundly about this one is that they call it unique, but they haven't yet defined how it's unique. There is no law that allows them to do what they're doing specifically. So for instance, private foundations do not, in fact, have to adhere to transparency rules. It's one of the advantages of setting up family foundations. So a government entity working with a private organization, in fact, can hide behind the lack of transparency in the private partner. But we are talking about a private park in public space where a state agency has given them the right to raise money on public land to both build and operate a seven-and-a-half-mile trail. I argue that the state gave them that right in an organization that had never been established, had no working record, had nobody on staff who had ever, in fact, handled a project of this size other than Sina Hudson. And now we're told that Sina Hudson, in fact, does not have the right to vote down anything the Fjord Trail does. So once again, we, the public, are confused about who actually will run this, how are they going to run it, and how much it will cost. And on that final, I'll just end with telling one story. My last job job was as the first head of the 9/11 Memorial Foundation and Museum. The public was told that that would cost $350 million when I took that job. That's what the public was told. We had trouble raising that money. We raised $50 million and then hit a blank park. And I was told by the government, Gretchen, relax. You know government will pay the difference. The 9/11 Memorial Museum and monument costs $1.3 billion. $1.3 billion. The public was told it would cost $350 million. The Fjord Trail has been in existence for three years. We've been asking for budgets. We've yet to see a budget for construction costs or operation costs. We're now told they're not going to raise an endowment, they're going to fundraise for this. How are they going to raise that money? How are they going to operate it? And who will be responsible when a 16-year-old kid gets on that trail in the middle of the night and thinks it's funny to jump into the river? Who is going to pay the liability? Who's going to pay the repair of a seven-and-a-half-mile-long trail, including a boardwalk?
Thank you so much. Sorry, I'm struggling with the handwriting a little bit. Hi, Paul.
Not the best. Yeah, I live on New Street, 8 New Street, opposite the Boat Club. I think many in the room know me. I walk, run, and bike a lot around the village. I'm a member of Phillips Town Advocates for Trails, a pro-trail grassroots community group, and also a member of Phillips Town Trails Committee, which is an advisory group to the town board on how to improve walkability in the town. As you can tell, I'm not originally from around these parts. When I last lived in the UK, I lived in a small village, much like Cold Spring. It's a village that's actually mentioned in the Doomsday Book of 1086. It's a lot like Cold Spring, close-knit community surrounded by hills, there's a river. Unlike Cold Spring, it's got two roundabouts. Now, since moving to Cold Spring from Peak School three years ago, I've closely followed the work of the Fjord Trail. I've invested time in educating myself on it, and I regularly speak out, typically on social media. And I believe that speaking out like we're doing tonight is our responsibility as residents of the community. I strongly support the proposed trail. I get that visitor numbers may briefly overwhelm us on a few peak weekends, but I see this as a price worth paying for such a great recreational amenity for local people, especially for young people, 24/7, 365 days a year. Right now, young people can't safely walk, bike, or run around the village, nor easily get to the water or hiking trails due to railroad and property rights. And we owe it to them to fix this, and the Fjord Trail will help us. Hudson-Highness Field Trail has earned my trust. It's taken a bit of time. I have to admit, there's times when that trust is tested, but I trust that the Hudson-Highness Field Trail, with our input, will get it about right. I support access to the trail via Dockside Park, which is a stone's throw from where I live. I understand that this will require MTA approval. I assume if you're going to run something alongside the track. I trust that Hudson-Highness Field Trail will use some kind of see-through, whatever you call it, fence. And I trust that the village, if necessary, can regulate parking by strict enforcement of a modified parking policy. Regardless of where the Dockside happens, I strongly support improved pedestrian sidewalks on Morris Avenue and on Fair Street. On Fair Street may demand some modifications. Thank you.
Did you say that you also support unfair and Morris? I just
I did.
Thank you. Maureen Tompkins, 25. You want to pass? Okay. Okay. Thank you for respecting that. Tara Carroll. Hello.
Excuse me, you're reading everyone's address?
Excuse me, you're reading everyone's dress? Or are they, are they all village residents?
Tara Carroll is a village business owner, would you like? You didn't start my timer yet, no. Thank you very much, but. We, we got it under control up here, okay? Thanks very much. Okay, go ahead.
Tara Carroll, uh we own Old Souls on Main Street, sixty-three Main Street, Barbara and Brew at sixty-nine Main Street. Um we own the building uh there as well, and we own a home in Phillips Town. Um I've been mostly in a listening position here, um but I do, as someone who. Regularly directs hikers onto the trails in our area. I have to speak out against the safety requirements that we, I feel as stewards of this land. Need to address. Um I am interested to learn more about the impacts of the trail ending at Little Stony Point versus Dockside. Um I think that we can all come together, I think we need to come together. And I think it is our responsibility to come together to find the right spot for this to end. The trail meeting, but we also have a huge responsibility to take care of the situation on ninety. Um with. Hikers, pedestrians, drivers and cyclists. I'm also an outdoor enthusiast and um when people can be outside regularly and safely. It improves the entire community. And it's not just for us, it's for everybody who comes here, and those people are going to keep coming. Um finally, um. Uh this is, feels strong for me to say, I don't mean it strongly, but. There have been a lot of regulations that the village has put upon business owners. That is been detrimental to us. We have a lot of pressures. Covid was very difficult, um. All of our expenses are increasing, it's very difficult to find people to work for us. We have to pay fair wages, we have to pay for insurance, we have to pay for utilities, we have to pay the rent. And when our top line is crunched. It's very difficult to find the way to make that all happen. And I believe that the village has had a number of challenges presented to them over the past eleven years that I've been. Owning a business in the village where um regulations have come down that have significantly reduced our top line. And um that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mike Delorn, fifteen Circuit Street. I think I mispronounced your name, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Mike Delorn, I live at fifteen Orchard Street in the village. I firmly believe that the Fuhrer Trail design as presented at the March eleventh meeting represents the most viable presented option. Uh to resolve the pedestrian safety issue that we have on Fair Street. Um as anybody who goes to the village knows, on any nice weekend day, uh several months out of the year. Uh this is an existing problem, this is not a projected power. Uh I understand the concerns that people have raised about uh. You know, creating the trailhead at Dockside Park, uh and the parking issues that that will create. Um I believe that many of those concerns can be addressed through enhanced enforcement. Um in contrast, pedestrian traffic issues uh fundamentally, I think, require the building of new infrastructure. Many details were presented on April third by the Hudson Highlands Fuhrer Trail and Orca. Um one of the most interesting uh that I found personally that I did not know before. Is that fifty percent of the visitation to the Hudson Highlands State Park is to Little Stony Point and Bull Hill. I raise this point uh because it stands to reason that regardless of what improvements we see at Breakneck or Duchess Manor. That the Fair Street problem is not going to go away. Okay, we can argue that it will reduce it somewhat as new parking comes online at Duchess Manor. Or train stops are more frequent at Breakneck, but I don't think this problem will solve itself. Uh so I think for a variety of reasons that Orca covered um in the April third presentation. Building sufficiently wide sidewalks on Fair Street and ninety. You support peak pedestrian traffic seems unlikely without taking other measures like making Fair Street one-way or pedestrian only during peak visitation periods. Uh I raise this point not because I support doing that, I think that that raises a host of other issues, not least of which is, it would be a major inconvenience to residents. And I don't just mean residents on Fair Street, right? I have kids, they play baseball at Mayor's Park. Getting to Mayor's Park on a weekend, you know, especially if you have elderly relatives that wanna go see the game, it's, it's a problem, okay? So this is something that we need to fix. Um I also think that the solution that was put forward recently by the mayor of Cold Spring, the mayor of Nelsonville and Phillips Town, uh. Uh supervisor uh to complete the sidewalk on Fair Street. And build a new sidewalk on ninety um was not covered on April third, right? Think anybody who watched that presentation may have noted that this was absent from there. I have no idea what the mechanics of the decision-making process was for HHFT or Orca. Don't know why they chose not to model that scenario, and I think it is, it is a missing scenario that they should have modeled. Um but what I will say is that the data that they presented would indicate. That if, if we all agree that there is a fundamental limit to how many pedestrians can be on a sidewalk at any time. Um that this option is probably going to fall short, right? There just is not enough space to build sidewalks to accommodate the peak load. So having said all of this, um.
Kevin McGarry, one sixty-eight main.
And I want to apologize, I did not mean to. No, I just wanna make sure that residents are, are heard. Um I think that the trail, as the, there's a lot of options, I think, that are being shouted down, no matter what they turn out to be. You know, I'm, my house is on Main Street, I have uh. Hikers sitting on my porch, you know, when I, when I come home, the infrastructure is not here for the people that are coming in visiting already. And we have a group that wants to bring in world-class architects to help build a trail. That's gonna alleviate a lot of these issues, provide services, provide bathrooms, provide staff. This is something that should not be dismissed out of hand, I agree that there's, that, that there has to be give and take, but I think that there's a side. In the village and voices that are outside the village that wanna be against any compromise. Or anything that just includes a trail. I think that there needs to be more discussion between the groups that are for and against to come up with some sort of. Rational understanding of, you know, the major issue that we face as a village, which is. We have like an abundance of people coming here that we can't service, you know, so. Um you know, the bottom line is, I think that we can't shout down each other, I think there has to be, you know, more workshops and more groups. Put together that, you know, that can come up with a um with um sort of a compromise, working with. The state, the Fuhrer Trail people, Sina Hudson, you know, people who are against, you know, people who are for, so. That's basically it, thank you.
Timothy Haskell, thirteen Church Street.
Uh hello.
Hi.
Um okay, so I'm, I'm very glad we're having this meeting. And I've edited this next sentence because I remember that I like you very much. Let me originally drafted it, it was not as nice as I'm about to make it. So I am, I'm very happy we're having this meeting, but I am a bit disappointed that it is happening after you made your proclamation. Because now, just because I am in and about in a lot of places in a lot of ways. It is definitely being used as a cudgel against constructive conversation. And um cause I, I literally hear, what about what you said, what about what you said? That said, I would like to offer up that although I have a great deal of access to pure trail information for anyone who knows me. It is by and large the same public information that some choose to either ignore, accuse of being misleading, or oppose in principle. The one thing it isn't, in my opinion, is vague or ambiguous, in my opinion. If I may, I would like to remind folks that although there are a great number of opponents to this project, there are at least as many advocates. I've heard some really thoughtful ideas from opponents that are fair and pragmatic, and even though I am a great supporter of the project. And I have been way before I had any personal connection to it, I can see valid points on all sides, don't disagree. With many of the exceptions people have taken. But we all must humble ourselves a little, and not assume that our opinions are shared by everyone. And that everyone could work a little harder to listen to each other. I learned so much from these info sessions. Uh concluding uh the maintenance plans on the trail, which I wasn't aware of. Uh the uh crosswalks, uh the bathrooms, the bathrooms that are going to be upgraded. Not just on the trail, but near the trail, in the village, adding trash cans to both the trail and to the village. Um and the surround, and of course, seeing the renderings of the trail are breathtaking. As someone with arthritis in their knees and um as beautiful of an area that this is. I can't always take full advantage of how beautiful it is. It is easily the prettiest place I've ever lived, but I grew up in Brooklyn. I would be in heaven if I could walk alongside the river or ride my bike on a flat surface and enjoy all the splendor of the Hudson River. Traversing these hills, especially on a bike, is difficult for me, but this is of course only my opinion, and I won't assume everyone or anyone agrees with me. But I would like to add one thing, that's a little bit of a tangent, that when I see people call this a Disneyland project. I just wish that people care as much about parks and trails as they do about amusement parks. I think people are overstating the interest in this, in this trail as a Disneyland experience anyway.
Thank you, and in exchange for stopping your comments, may I say that I appreciate that you use the word cudgel? I'm gonna say, I'm gonna come back to you, you're outside of the village, so I'll come back.
As does our shop owner.
Fifteen Academy Street, okay, I'm sorry, I just.
That's okay, I'll go to the end.
Gordon Weiss, Rosie McGuire, you both signed up?
Yeah.
Eight Fish Street, so it's, so are you each taking three minutes, or you?
No, we're together.
So good evening to Mayor Foley and the village board and the fellow villagers. Thank you so very much for having this meeting tonight, giving us all an opportunity to share our thoughts, feelings, concerns and dreads. My name is Gordon Joseph Weiss, this is my wife Rosie McGuire Weiss, we live on. The east side of Fish Street at the corner of North and Fish Streets, directly behind the Metro North tracks and the depot restaurant. And to be clear, we do not oppose the entirety of the Fuhrer Trail. But we are here this evening specifically to state our intention and determination to oppose. The altered, alternative route number six, which would run directly behind our home.
And as we would be directly affected by alternative route six. It is our hope tonight to articulate our extreme displeasure, anger, anxiety and stress that this idea has already caused us. We moved to Cold Spring eight years ago, spending our hard-earned life savings to attain well-deserved peace, quiet and tranquility. Route six behind our home most definitely would ruin that reality and create personal havoc in our lives. This is not a general project that should be taken generally, this project affects people's homes and their lives. And in that, it is personal, and so it should be considered with that in mind, with all due respect to people who actually live in Cold Spring. Our neighbor Mikey Mills-Paw, which probably most of you know, was born and raised here, raised by her folks at Four Fish Street. She raised her son in that house, she has spent her adult life backbreakingly creating her backyard sanctuary. Her beautiful sanctuary, which is now her beautiful memorial to her beloved son Vin. Would alternative route six destroy this? Absolutely.
We have cultivated our own backyard to be our sanctuary as well. Backbreaking so far and uh eight years, but route six would be a shattering. To our retirement and our lives, contributing to a complete lack of privacy, the constant. Nuisance of foot traffic and all of that that entails, and we are all aware of what that is. Since Cold Spring has already become a destiny spot, hikers, sea streakers, leafers, antiquers. Day trippers, dot, 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 the Fuhrer Trail will bring thousands more to our already taxed little town. All that said, would you like or approve of a route six in your backyard? We har- highly doubt that, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, hi, and I wanna thank Mayor Foley and the village board for having this public meeting. I think we're, I am a village resident, I live in the village and have lived here for over twenty years. I walk it every day, both Main Street and the Foundry Trail, um I love trails. I um have been excited about a trail along the river since I moved here over twenty years ago. But I know it has changed and I understand the concerns of my neighbors. And I wanna encourage us to continue to speak to one another about our concerns and share our concerns. I think when misinformation gets out there, um when dialogue is shut down, that that divides the community. We all live closely together, we're a town and a village, that's very tiny compared to the state. I think if we speak to one another and have more public meetings and public discussions without shutting it down. Unfortunately, some communications are misinterpreted as shutting down the dialogue, and that should not happen. Um I also wanna direct everyone to the town of Phillips Town's comprehensive plan of twenty twenty-two. Which was um voted on by the town board and adopted, and which does include the Fuhrer Trail. So I encourage you all to read that plan. Um and as a resident, as I said, I love this village, I don't wanna see us divided, let's talk to one another. We can communicate in a small town, thank you.
Um Jan Thatcher, sixty-two Chestnut.
Um I'm a longtime resident of Cold Spring, I know the waterfront by the back of my head and. I, I can't tell you the hours I have spent out there and the joy it has bring in, brought me. Um I, I am advocating here for ADA accessibility. And I have a major concern about the safety of, I'm gonna say, the, the west side of the track proposal. I'm very much like Malachi, I think it should start at the Metro North train platform and run straight through um. North, but not the Route six proposal, I take it there are two or three, I'm legally blind, I haven't seen them, I've only walked them. So I am saying that the most advantageous ADA accessible. From the Metro North platform and the rest of the village is straight down the tracks on the east side. It is a little problematic how we get it through, I understand that, but I think that that is. A absolute direct route, it's level, you can take a wheelchair from here all the way to Breakneck if it's done correctly. And I think that would be magnificent. The other issue I have is if it is put on the water side. Having been a paddler out there for thirty years, I know that the uh, it's called Sailmaker's Reach. From the gateway from Storm King Breakneck to West Point is called Sailmaker's Reach. It's called that way because the, the weather is absolutely. Uh undependable and can come on you in a heartbeat, um presenting very bad situations. Um the other thing is during the summer, it's very flat, it acts as a mirror. The heat gets very intense, the rip rack, the railroad tracks, I don't know if anybody's gone down there like after three or four days. And put the, put a thermometer in between the, the concrete railroad ties and the rip rack. And taking a measurement of how hot that gets, it's going to retain heat, it's going to make that walkway. Frankly, I think miserable to walk on after that kind of exposure. It, I think it also could prove to be um. A health hazard, quite frankly, both to, if you're encouraging disabled people to come. The elderly to come, the young to come, you get them out on a walkway like that, that has been exposed for that long with the heat. I think you're going to have problems. Um I'm advocating for the east side of the tracks some way. Um I think, uh obviously, uh. Fair Street is, I mean, you can't get a wheelchair up Main Street, and how, how are you gonna get one from the train platform to Dockside? How do you get a wheelchair? Not suggest to you, but has anybody?
endorsement for the village board for that activity.
Not suggest to you, but. Has anybody?
endorsement for the village board for that activity. Um, Stephanie Skiptunis, eighty-eight Fair Street.
Thank you. Hello. Um, I am speaking on behalf of uh, several of the residents of Fair Street. Um, I live at eighty-eight Fair Street and we are directly impacted by the Dockside Connector portion of the Fuhr Trail. Uh, I personally think that a trail from, from Little Stony Point all the way as far as it can go is a wonderful idea. But we take issue with installing the Dockside Connector portion of that trail. Along the train tracks. Um, the safety precautions that are mandated by the NTA affects our views. It affects our privacy. And our property values, and so we oppose this. You know, and as a community, we have not yet been given an accurate rendering of how that, that will depict how the trail and the fencing required by the NTA. Will look through the Dockside, throughout the Dockside Connector trail, portion of the trail. Uh, we've seen AI renderings with lovely gravel paths and with uh, trees and bushes and things like that. But it's quite misleading as uh, as I understand that and when it gets to the inlet portion, which is in front of our properties. Uh, that the tracks, the trail will have to be built five feet above grade and then there will need to be a, a minimum of eight foot fencing. Above that. Um, that will completely diminish the view from Little Stony Point. It'll diminish the view from walking along Fair Street. It'll diminish the view from our homes. Um, but we do believe that there's a reasonable solution to the problem. Beginning the Fuhr Trail at Little Stony Point, it's a realistic way to mitigate the pedestrian problems that plague the village of Cold Spring. Hikers can be met with information and bathrooms and garbage cans, watering stations, all of which will keep them from overtaxing the resources of the village. Additionally, as residents, we welcome a safe walking path and bike lane that runs along Fair Street. Something that will make it easier to access Little Stony Point for hikers and residents of the, of the village alike. And then the, the, the view along Fair Street can be preserved for everyone to enjoy. So thank you again for letting the voice of the Fair Street residents be heard and uh, I look forward to more calm conversation as well.
Stephanie, do you have the names of the people on whose behalf you're speaking? Can you send them to the clerk?
I can.
Thank you. Um. Um, and Stephanie and Paul's here. One of you is speaking, both of you are honest.
Hi. David and Mayor and Board of Trustees, my name is Tom LaValle, I live on uh, hundred and five uh, Fair Street.
Can you come up to the top, but I can hear you online.
There's every low team. No problem. Be glad to.
Thank you.
For those of you who don't know me, I am a lifelong resident of Cold Spring. Uh, and a former, Donnie, that's right, we know each other a long time. Uh, also, uh, out of the almost seventy-five years I've lived here, fifty years I've lived on West Street. And if you want to know about how that affects this project. On the west side of Cold Spring, I'd be glad to inform you. I mean, over the years. Growing up to have Barman's Bazaars down there over the years, they had boat races down there. The number of people. That had come into the village even long, I'm talking forty years ago plus. And to see five to ten thousand people come in on a weekend. Was unbelievable back then. I don't know how the village handled it at the time. David, my neighbor, uh, my friend, my former mayor. Uh, has lived in this village as well. But. I agree with the mayor's opinion about the Fuhr Trail. I think this is too much of an impact and a lot of the uh. Concerns for the village, an expenditure, people, traffic. I've sat at, also, I don't know if anybody knows, for twelve and a half years I volunteered and was the chairman of the zoning board in Cold Spring. And anybody that was ever come before my board and my people always had an open ear. We've always tried to keep. Uh, an open ear, make good, solid, sensible decisions. And working with the planning board as well, I haven't heard anything yet about the planning board's opinion on something like that in Cold Spring. I think that's important. I think it's also important to have people take some, from Cold Spring, take some kind of a petition and find out are you in favor or not in favor. But to start that project from Dockside, it's going to be an absolute nightmare for Cold Spring. You think it's bad now, wait till they start that project. You can't, you can't fit. The amount of people and traffic and everything else, parking. Um, it's going to hinder too many things, it's going to affect the village. Not only the village, but it's going to affect. It's going to affect the aesthetic value of why people move to Cold Spring. I'm sure anybody that moves here from Cold Spring, Brooklyn, whatever you want to call it. I was born here. I go back eight generations from this town. And I appreciate the beauty, the quaintness. The friendliness. Of a community like Cold Spring. There's nothing like it. If you can walk the town, I've been all over the world. Back to home. I appreciate where I live. I, I am opposed to this trail. I am not opposed totally if it started north of Sandy Beach, which I called it years ago, or if they wanted to start it up in Beacon. Let them start up Beacon and go back to Cold Spring. Thanks.
Arabamos, six Rock Street. Traveling music.
Hello, uh, thank you all for, for having this meeting. I think it's really important to have a meeting where you let people speak their piece and um. I've lived in the village for twenty years. There have been tremendous changes. There will continue to be tremendous changes. What we approve or don't approve will not, I don't think, you know. Deter the number of people that will continue to come. The visitor numbers will continue to rise. I think it's really essential to have a way for people to commute via bicycle or possibly by walking from here. To Beacon and back. I think that would be a tremendous, tremendous advantage for people. And I also um. My father worked for New York State Parks for about fifty years. In almost every situation where a bike trail was proposed, there were. People that were adamantly opposed in the community that fought very hard to keep them from coming into being. And almost like I've never heard of the opposite point happening. Once it's in place, people are very excited about it. And property values go up, which can have downsides too. But basically it is an incredible asset to have a pedestrian and bicycle trail abutting your house. Connecting your town to somewhere else. I think it would be a huge plus for the village. And I also just wanted to say that as far as parking. I don't see any additional space for parking in the village and I think it's fine. I think it's fine to publicize that. The new parking rules that we put into place recently, they really work. I live on Rock Street. There are fewer people driving on my street on the weekends. Because they're not searching for parking spaces because they know that there's no parking spaces. I realize like some people are newcomers, so they're looking around, but there's a lot of people that are repeat visitors. And what they would normally do on the weekend is troll all the village streets, waiting to find a parking space and that doesn't happen anymore. We do have the ability to affect parking and street traffic by. Putting in metered parking and uh, so I think that that's a great success and I appreciate you guys getting it done. And I think it's a good thing to like reference back when thinking about the problems of having more people show up because. More people will be accessing this amenity.
Thank you, and I'm glad to hear it's working well on Rock Street.
Yeah. Hello, hello. Good evening, ma'am, trustees. Um, so my name is Pete Smith. I am Constitution Drive. Um, I wanted to share a point of reference. Uh, that I know about firsthand that would serve to inform this. I tend to be cautiously supportive of Fuhr Trail. And um, and I say cautiously, I do so appreciate uh, input like that, which Gretchen offered. Uh, I think this, this sort of uh. You know, critical eye toward a lot of details like that is very much warranted. On the other hand, in general, um, I, I. Supported as something that we might be able to enjoy as a community. My point of reference is um. Before moving to Cold Spring fourteen years ago, uh, I lived in San Francisco, California. Uh, at a time when the Presidio uh, military base was being decommissioned. And a uh, stretch of open space waterfront called Chrissy Field, which was part of that. Um, was uh, slated for uh, you know, increased recreational use, et cetera. And it was a deplorable mess. Crowds, then in San Francisco, just as now in Cold Spring, had started to surge to the area. Especially with the recently decommissioned military base, which made it all the more recreational. And um, the crowds, so you might know visually speaking, if you're not familiar with. You wouldn't know the name Chrissy Field necessarily, but if you could picture a view from a waterfront on the bay and the view. All over to the left is the Golden Gate Bridge. You're really right under it. It's dramatic. It's probably one of the most jaw dropping, beautiful. Uh, sights in, in the country. And so that stretch of waterfront uh, and open space. Uh, called Chrissy Field. Was a horribly graded mess with hordes and hordes and hordes of people coming. In numbers that absolutely could not be supported through, with parking and access and everything else, not to mention, once they got onto the open spacer of the trail. It was horrible and deplorable and a big mess. So there was uh, there was a, 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 a project that went underway, which was to rehabilitate it and. A lot of it, I won't get into the details, was, it echoed quite a bit. Uh, uh, what we're hearing here from the Hudson Islands Fuhr Trail. Uh, in terms of, you know, the environmental sensitivity and, and you know, the, the flow of traffic and of humans, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And we were all, there was so much, you know, like concern about, oh, this is, this is it. This is, you know, it's, it's going to be a horror. Uh, Tara talked about, you know, everybody has those predictions prior to, you know, an open space like that opening up. Anyway, this was wonderful. The change was dramatically, dramatically, a huge improvement, to say that, that's.
Fran Hodges. Yeah, for High Street. Hi.
For High Street.
Well, I'd like to say that a public-private uh, partnership to develop a park is neither unusual nor sinister. Uh, the Central Park Conservancy in Manhattan and the CrossFit Park Conservancy in Brooklyn took areas that were pretty much abandoned by the city. And caused fear. The people who used them, they civilized them. They made them beautiful. And I didn't hear anyone complain that they were co-opting public land to do so. Uh, so I have, I feel that this uh, partnership is, there's nothing wrong with what's happening with the Fuhr Trail. Uh, using uh, public land. Um. Second of all, I um, want to support the start of the trail in Cold Spring. Um. As many people have said, disabled cannot hike up Breakneck Ridge anymore. It's the idea of going on a level trap that goes partly over the water between Stony Point and um. The railroad station uh, or North Gate at Dockside Harbor property is very attractive as an experience in its own right. Uh, I cited in a letter I wrote you the trail in Peak Skill. That also goes over the water for a great degree. And I didn't hear any complaining about uh, the blocking of the railroad uh, tracks by being on the riverside of the railroad tracks. So I don't know if that's a red herring here. Um. But. The, the point is that if you start at Dockside, no one goes through the Fair Street or the Village Streets. It's directly from the train station to Little Stony Point. Uh, that encourages people to come up by train. Uh, I, I'm sure that there will be additional parking spaces for cars. Uh, Dutchess Manor and other places, but this would be an enormous boost for train travel. And having lived here for twenty-seven years, my husband originally uh, drove into New York. When he found how comfortable it was to take the train, he much preferred the train. Actually, I can't imagine people really preferring to drive from the city or intermediate points when they have the option of taking the train. Getting off the train, walking across to uh, Dockside and then of course, uh, what might be a very attractive boardwalk to Little Stony Point. I also, I mentioned in my letter that if we start at Little Stony Point or Breakneck, people are still along the road. And it does feel, as someone who's walked that road because I don't drive, it's harrowing. Uh, not as harrowing as walking past Breakneck with two thousand cars on either side of the road. But it's still, people drive fast and you don't feel terribly safe. So I think the advantages of starting at Dockside are great.
Thank you very much. Sorry that I can't read the last name. Ken is the first name?
Oh yeah, it's uh, Ken and Angie. Hi, Mary. Uh, actually, I, I, I thought it was just a sign and she.
I'm glad you're here. Okay, so Andy, I'm taking you up a little too. Okay, Bianca Moreno, one Market Street.
Hi. Thank you. A letter I wrote to you guys. Um. Here, trustees and villagers, my name is Bianca Moreno and I'm not only a resident of Cold Spring Village, but I'm a lower Main Street resident. Also very close to Dockside Park. I'm also business owner on Main Street in Cold Spring and I've been both for the past five years. I'm very much in favor of access to the Fuhr Trail, Fuhr Trail in the village of Cold Spring. I believe this will benefit all of the residents of Cold Spring to have immediate access to this incredible walkway. Before Cold Spring, I was a resident of downtown Brooklyn for fifteen years, very close to what is now Brooklyn Bridge Park. I was there before the development of the waterfront walkway there. And initially I was against it and I was irritated at the new developments coming up. And the blockage of my beautiful Manhattan view. Um, however, in the years to come, I was more grateful to have firsthand access to the amazing waterfront walkway. Um, that I would come to spend many days on enjoying every day of the week. Walking, biking, enjoying the sunset, strolls with my dogs were an invaluable refuge that I look forward to after a long day of work. I believe the Cold Spring residents will come to feel the same way.
Okay, John Erickson, thirty-two West Street.
All right. Um, I have one question and one comment concern. Um, my question is at the March eleventh event at Dutchess Manor. Um, Scape disclosed that the Southern Shoreline Trail from Dockside to Little Stony Point. Would have to be constructed with a top-down method because the water's too shallow to use barges. Um, and it would have a hundred and thirty sections, two piled construction, kind of inching along as they go. Um. I was immediately worried that they would have to then truck everything through the village, so I asked C, um, HHFT. If that was the case and they told me that my question was premature. Um, it doesn't seem premature to me because the DGIS is scheduled to be released in two months. I feel like they should be further along in their planning, at least the broad brushstrokes of it. Um, they did say that they would be starting from Little Stony Point and Dockside concurrently. Um. And so. My question to you is, have you all had that conversation with them? Um, have they given any indication? Um, obviously I'm worried about the impact it would have for Main Street, for um, residences in the lower village. Um, and just also the um, impact on infrastructure. And then my concern um, at the April eleventh event. Um, Scape disclosed that HHFT wants to add three hundred and fifty-six parking spaces. Um, to, or three sixty-five, sorry, three sixty-five. Um, to the uh, Fuhr Trail corridor. Currently there are two hundred and thirty-four spaces between um. Washburn Trailhead and Breakneck Ridge. Um. I think it undercuts their um, objectives for. Um, I think it undercuts their, um, objectives for, um, climate change. Um, but that much aside, um, the stoplight in Cold Spring is a pinch point on Route 90. Everyone in this room has probably experienced heavy traffic on 90 during the, um, peak seasons. Um, I worry about the increased, um, traffic. From add from more than doubling parking capacity north of the village. Um, and also the adverse kind of spillover effects that it could have in the village. We still have Metro North Train Station, um, which has hundreds of spots there and there are still pockets to park around the village. I think that will incentivize and induce people to park in the village. And HHFT is paying, um, charging for parking and charging surge pricing during peak times. Um, thank you so much for taking the time to listen.
So we're, we'll finish in the room. Um, Dave Morandi, fifteen, fifteen Academy Street. And they're down in East Mountain Road, and then we'll go online.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, as you know, I was the mayor for seven years. Uh, I was also on the, uh, town board for three years. I was also on the steering committee, uh, that was started by Hudson Highland Fuhr Trail. Um, I was at all the meetings from the beginning one at, uh, the Downey Garrison. To the ones at both Dutchess Manor and at the, uh, at the Chalet. Um, one of the things I think we should understand is that they've never, Cold Spring has never been kind of involved in this. Uh, as mayor wasn't involved in this, when they didn't come, they didn't do presentations for Cold Spring. Um, we seemed to be the last one on their list. So that's something to, to think about. Um, I think, uh, to talk about the, uh, alternate, uh, alternate route analysis. I just think the major flaw on that is that we're working with, uh, scenic Hudson's design. And not the community trail, uh, that was, that was backed by the community back in 2007, I think, on. Um, and this was at the simple trail. Uh, the trail was started to, uh, uh, for safety or concerns of people walking, uh, along 90. People walking in the tracks. Um, this is how this all started. Greenway Trails actually were the people that presented at the town board. Um, at the time. Um, and so the, the problem is with the alternate analysis. Is that we're working off of the, uh, scenic Hudson's, uh, designs and we're not considering anything else. So if you're considering a 10 to 15 foot or whatever, it's hard to get information, the detailed information from scenic Hudson. Um, but if you're working with a trail that wide, of course that limits you to where you can put the trail and what you can do with it. If the trail was narrower, I think there would be more options. Um, but that's not the case. We're working with what they want to work with and we're kind of following their lead, um, through this whole project. So I'd like to bring that up. Um, also, I, I, I think the, uh, the MTA just came out with a, uh, climate resilience roadmap. On how they're going to deal with and mitigate, uh, for climate change and sea level rise. Um, if they move forward with these plans, um, in the near future, which I think they have to. We've all seen, there have been closings down the railway more than we've ever seen before this year. There's been flooding. The Beacon parking lot is completely underwater, um, as are parts of the track. And their mitigation, uh, plan will include a lot of construction. And if we have a boardwalk, uh, sitting there in their way, um, it will probably have to come down, which is a waste of tax fare money. Um, in closing, I'd like to say, I would ask those who propose that, uh, believe in the trail and, uh, you know, are for it. Um, I, I think, please just ask if, uh, do I care about quality of life? Do I care about, uh, tax dollars spent? Do I care about, uh, the environment? And, uh, I think you should look into those, uh, three questions and then come up with your decision. Because all of these will negatively be affected by the Fuhr Trail. Thanks for letting me roll around.
Okay. So now we've, we have, everyone in the room who wishes to speak? Okay. So we're all going to turn our heads this way. Um, to ask first, um, we're going to, to recognize village residents and business owners first. Um, and then move to neighbors in Phillips Town and Nelsonville. If I could ask this to help us, if you don't know everybody's name, if you are a villager who wishes to speak. Please raise your hand. Um, and again, it's three minutes. Um, are you able to hear the pings of the timer? Online? Someone?
Give a thumbs up.
Thumbs up? No, no. All right. So, so I'll shout out. Thank you, Trace. Okay. Um, Derek Graham is a resident of the village. Three minutes?
Uh, good evening. Um, I'm sorry. I don't have the, uh, visual for you.
You're at thirty, Fair Street, right? Or thirty-two?
I live at thirty-two West Street. Again, I apologize. Like, my camera's not doing what it's supposed to do. Anyway, I only have three minutes, so I'm gonna have to kind of talk fast. I'm hoping you won't shut me off if I go a little over. But that seems to happen to me these days.
Just like we do with everybody else. Mr. Graham, three minutes?
Uh-huh. Uh, I wanted to point out, uh, as a point of reference, I'm Derek Graham at thirty-two West Street over the ice cream parlor. I have a bird's eye view of Dockside. I see everything that goes on here. So I'm not, um, I'm not in the backseat. I'm in the front seat. Uh, to no surprise, uh, to a reader of our current, I support none of the misalignments proposed between Stony Point and, and Dockside. However, I am supportive, for the most part, in theory of developments north of Little Stony Point. I, I should point out that my opinions are not created in a vacuum. I've talked to a lot of residents, both pro and con. I'm, I like to hear all sides of it and I can tell you my opinions are not formed in a vacuum. As we hear tonight, um, residents of Fair Street and lower bit, in the lower village will also support what I'm about to say here. Uh, I would like to rebut that regardless of what happens in San Francisco or Peakskill. Cold Spring is not San Francisco, San Francisco or Peakskill. Uh, I'll say that present circumstances are devastating on the weekends and it serves no, no purpose to pretend that a bridge from Dockside is a magic bullet to lay such circumstances. I'd like to remind people that already there is ADA act, ADA access to the riverfront, both here and in Beacon. And there will be north of Stony Point, you don't have to build a ramp from Dockside to have ADA access. Um, I have said publicly that I don't believe that arguments should be based on personal preferences or what, what he or she likes. But the bigger picture of what's best for the village, practical infrastructure measures that affect everybody. Not how many Facebook likes or what the developer says is the most popular. I believe the mayor and the board of, who, who are duly elected by the residents should observe. Uh, the mayor and the board's point of view that this is a bad idea to connect Dockside and, uh, Little Stony Point. I believe the success of the trail is inverse to the well-being of the village. I don't agree that it will, it's a good thing for the village. I believe that it's the opposite. I believe that you're not going to resolve future congestion by adding more traffic. That's counterintuitive. I think such outcomes are based on Pollyanna expectations that are best left to, uh, the public relations board. And I don't believe it's the bailiwick of HHFT to micromanage our infrastructure affairs within, in the village. Um, nothing that I've heard to date makes a logical or compelling argument from Dockside to Little Stony Point, other than people's personal preferences.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. We've reached three minutes. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I just want to clarify for the public record, um, perhaps you didn't, you weren't with us at the beginning of the meeting. That this board as a body has not taken a position on the Fuhr Trail. It was I and I alone speaking on my own behalf. Um, and the position was taken jointly, jointly with me, the mayor of Nelsonville and the Phillips Town, Town Supervisor. This board has not taken a position.
Thank you.
I'm going to, yeah. Okay. Um, Susan Peel is a village resident. Hi.
Hi. So first, um, I just. Oh, yes. Susan Peel, twenty-three Fair Street and prior to that thirteen Fair Street. And I'd just like to say that, first of all, thank you Mayor Foley for taking a stand on the Fuhr Trail. I really appreciate that. Um, having lived in the village and seen the traffic of visitation go up, 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 up. I was very surprised at the April four, April third presentation by the Fuhr Trail. To find that they, that Orca, their consultant, had found that it had been going trending down. Now, that was very strange to me. Then they went on to make their projections using that as a, a baseline. Their upper level projections were for a 44% increase in visitation. Their mid-range was 18. And so everything we were shown that day, that night, was based on 18% rise in visitation. So I just want to point out that if you actually believe that we were trending downward, that might make sense. But when we know the visitation has been trending upward. That middle ground 18 is much higher than that. And I also understand that the, the methodology that they use to find. Um, their high, their peak is also questionable. So I'm concerned that when I go to these presentations by the Fuhr Trail. That I come away with more questions than I have answers. And this has been a consistent thing with what's been going on. I really question the transparency of this operation. And that we're going to be getting this entire thing built and still not have answers until the final stages. That frightens me tremendously. I don't have a problem with hikers coming through Fair Street. I think we do have, need better sidewalks, better infrastructure to handle people. But I think dispersing people along the route from all the way from the train station to Main Street. Does help with traffic into the village and we don't need a starting point at Dockside. That's my opinion. Um, I also want to say one more thing about 9D. No matter how many parking lots they put on 9D. No matter how many roundabouts, we're still on one road. And this road was the evacuation route to get from, if Indian Point were to ever have a problem, this was our evacuation route. It is a main route highway between Cold Spring and Beacon. And we're, this, this project is going about it, making this into. A park thoroughfare only. And I think we're, I think we're, we're fighting not only for. We're fighting to keep our community connected with other communities in ways other than a prescribed park. I, I'm sorry. I can't hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Trace? Hi.
Someone had to go, right?
Put your hand down, just so I, I know that we, we address.
Hi. Thank you. Uh, I'm a village resident, Tracy Danisich. I live on thirty-one Church Street. Uh, I have kids here in the village and I think my, my whole family were really optimistic about the opportunity that the Fuhr Trail presents. We love parks and we love trails. Um, I've attended many of the informational sessions and certainly each time I learn something new. Um, I don't believe I'm an expert on, uh, routes or, uh, how this will impact. Uh, you know, business owners in the village and residents who live closer to the trail. Um, so I appreciate you making space for us non-experts to voice concerns and questions. And, um, it makes me hopeful that you'll, uh, help represent some of this feedback. I'm not, uh, at all anti-Cold Spring tourists who come in on the weekends and enjoy this beautiful space that we live in. But I am hopeful that, um, with your support, the, um, current residents will be. Important, made important in the decision-making process. Um, uh, including how we access the incredible wildlands that we live near. Um, not just, you know, our sidewalks and how many tourists come in. But, um, you know, at the last informational session, we heard a lot about parking. And, uh, it raised a question for me about, you know, some of the spaces that my family and I currently access all the time. Long Dock Park in Beacon and Madame Brett Park in Beacon, where we currently can't walk there. And, you know, it would be a seven mile bike ride for my young children if the, if the trail did exist. Uh, if parking were paid, I would now have to pay, as a resident, I would now have to pay for things, places that I currently access for free. Uh, places that I enjoy and, and use, uh, public parks and, and trails. Um, and it would just be a disappointment. Uh, you know, I'm hopeful that this will increase access to the place that we live. And to the Hudson River and to, you know, nature. And not, uh, create actually a limitation or a cost to us to be able to recreate in the ways that we already are.
Thanks. Are there any other villagers joining online? Shelley Gilbert, Gilbert, I see your physical hand shaking.
Yeah, yes. Am I, am I talking that you can hear me? Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't know how to put my hand up. Hi, Shelley Gilbert, thirty-eight Mountain Avenue. And I actually just want to say a few simple things because it's such a complex. Uh, problem and solution with many different opinions that we're talking about. And although I only have 24 years' experience in the community, I am, um, an avid outdoors person. So I have experience, um, you know, being a hiker on 9D to not being a hiker on 9D. So I appreciate all the efforts that have been done to increase the safety on that corridor. Including whatever they've done with the parking. Um, that's been a real help. But I can't help but to return to what I perceive to be the problem that we were trying to solve. And I might not catch all of the points, but my memory and my experience points to garbage. Bathrooms, lack of bathrooms and traffic, which includes parking and a lack of a safe sidewalk. Along Fair Street to get all the way to the entry to the parks. There's been a lot of new signage, a couple little trails like at Little Stony Point. However, the main problems are still not solved. And I don't understand why we're talking about a massive project without addressing a smaller. But very vital problem, which is, again, the garbage, the bathrooms, a simple sidewalk. And continue to work with the parking. And just, that's all I want to say about that right now. But I'd also like to say that. I understand this is a recreational opportunity, but I would like to go back to the problems we're trying to solve. We tried to create an, um, a, a solution for Phillips Town residents in creating a bike trail from Cold Spring to Garrison. I think if we put some money on that, into that project, which has already had a preliminary study. I think you'd get a lot of people behind that because that would directly benefit every single person in this room. Um, and the last thing I'd like to say, if we're going to talk big with climate change, make the Metro North Railroad. A rail trail and move the train up to nine. That's thinking big. It's Eisenhower era thinking. Because climate change is going to demand billions of dollars to maintain that. Okay.
Thank you, Shelley.
Yes.
I appreciate the thought outside the box. Um.
You got a reaction from the room.
You did. You got a big reaction from the room. Good night. Um, Henry Feldman?
Yeah, hi. Um, I wasn't going to speak. Um, uh, I'm Henry Feldman. I live at, uh, seventeen Wall Street. I am on the data review committee. I'm one of the two Cold Spring representatives. Um. I don't want to say anything for or against the, the different routes. I will say, and what I did say last fall was that, um. I don't perceive that any of the alternatives except for Dockside to Little Stony Point or of any interest. Um, to HHFT, uh, because of, um, ADA requirements. Uh, I think the first person asked about ADA, um, and, uh, the best I can gather is, uh, HHFT has made that a, uh, top-line requirement. But, uh, what actually is distressing me in the last week or so. Is, uh, what I see as a gap, uh, between what, uh, HHFT perceives as, um, the, um. How well the, where the shoreline, uh, uh, route is in, um, being approved. Versus what, uh, is in um being approved versus what uh our mayor, uh Nelsonville, and the supervisor heard uh from uh what I gather was an extensive meeting with uh the railroad people. It it bothers me that uh we're here at the beginning of May twenty twenty-four, and it's quite possible, it seems to me, that we are discussing something that can't happen. Um that the train people will say, no, uh that uh we want access to the tracks from the riverside and um uh your little path is very pretty, uh but it blocks our access. I have, uh as a member of the data committee, I have asked for some information on uh whether or not HHFT has gotten any kind of okay. Uh I have not seen that. Um that's about it. Um a- again, my my real concern is not for or against, but whether or not we are engaging in a giant waste of time, including um, you know, an hour and a half so far tonight.
Thank you, Henry. Can we check the second page? I don't see another hand raised here. It'll pop up at the Okay, is there anyone else in the audience with a village resident who would like to speak? You can also unmute yourself and and shout out if I can't see you. Okay, so um we'll shift to neighbors in uh Nelsonville and Phillips Town. Is there anyone wishing to speak from those parts of the community in the room first? Okay, online. Thank you.
Hello? Hello? Hi, this is Barry Goggins.
One sec. Okay, go ahead. Mister Mister Goggins?
Hello. I I couldn't figure out how to use uh uh Zoom here, anyway. My name is Barry Goggins, with fifty-two Fair Street in Cold Spring. Uh my concern is, uh simply, the traffic. Uh I, my son lives in uh uh down in Cortland. I go down to visit him, and just getting out of the out of town on the weekend, on a Saturday or a Sunday, going best to stop stop right there on Main Street and three or one, the traffic, it it it's impossible to get through at many times. And as this traffic increases, it's only gonna get worse. Also, if you, you know, you're concerned about uh access, uh hospitals and medical care, you know, an ambulance going down to the uh corner, uh the hospital, uh physical, is gonna take over an hour. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak from the online audience?
Um I will speak.
Hey, can you tell us your name and address?
Yes, my name is Kathleen McLean. I live at two zero six six Route ninety, um right where Fair Street and um Route ninety meet. Um the biggest question or the most confusing question I receive when just talking to people about all of this is, is it really that bad? That has been a question I have been asked. Is it really that bad? And it's just a crazy question to answer because um this all would not be happening if this wasn't a huge um issue. So for all that don't come to Cold Spring, the village of Cold Spring, or this area specifically where Little Stony Point is, on the weekend, it is really that bad. There are that many people, there are that many cars. It is dangerous in a lot of ways. Um so I just want to say that and make that very clear to people that this is in a looming idea that is coming. This is here, this is now. Um I feel as a homeowner so close to the location that I owe some um uh something to these hikers walking by. I'm sure that's why all of us are kind to them because there is no infrastructure in place to handle it. So any help I think is needed and welcome. And it's also a very interesting point, if you all look up the maps and see how that specific area um has overlapping jurisdictions with a bunch of different departments. And so I think it is also overlooked because of that. Um it's a complicated spot. I'm now learning more about Indian Point. That's a new thing. I never learned about that until today, that it was an evacuation route. Um it is an incredibly po- important intersection that most people, if you know, avoid. Um I don't think that's the answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Um I see Erin raising her hand. Can you tell us your name and address, please?
Well, are we moved on to businesses or are you still just doing addresses? Residents.
You're a you're a Cold Spring business owner. You were you were welcome in the first portion. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. I missed um. Anyhow, I am Erin Murphy. I am a business owner on Main Street. Um I do appreciate the opportunity to speak. As Tara had mentioned earlier, um a lot of the businesses have been facing some serious changes and issues um in the last uh few years, especially since COVID. I came just after that, so I can't speak on COVID. But I can say that um to some of the points that were made, that there is, in my opinion, since I've gotten here, less traffic on Main Street um for businesses. And one of the concerns that I hear over and over again with the Fjord Trail is the parking and congestion issue. Um one thing I think could actually benefit in that regard is that connecting Beacon to Cold Spring, um you actually are spreading out that parking to a degree. I think the people will still be coming up here. I think people will always want to visit Breakneck and want to visit Cold Spring and the different trails. Um but Beacon has a lot of parking, more so than Cold Spring. So I actually envision some people choosing to park there and take that Fjord Trail to Cold Spring, um alleviating some of that congestion. Um I also think that would benefit the businesses that are struggling um and hoping that more foot traffic comes because right now, the current state of the weekends is not what we have seen in years past. Um so as an individual who enjoys outdoor activities, I actually do believe the Fjord Trail will be a benefit to all, um and it's part of that uh physical and mental health benefit. And that's my two cents.
Anyone else in the room or online?
From anywhere.
From anywhere. Going twice. Okay. Um I really want to say thank you for, to everyone online and in the audience for a very civil evening um and respectful evening. This this is how problems get solved, not shouting. So thank you for for being um really nice to hang out with for the evening. Um and we will continue all of our conversations. And with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.